This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting has been duly called. The notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thank you all for coming out this evening. We do not have any action coming out of executive session, so we'll go ahead and do the prayer and the pledge, and I've got that tonight, so please stand. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for everything you've given us, God. Thank you for the freedoms we enjoy in this beautiful city and the place where we live and this awesome country we live in, Lord. We recognize that you are good. We recognize that you have a plan for our lives, God, but that plan comes with free will and that plan comes with our choices, God. And I just pray that we'll lean into that and we'll lean into your plan and we'll lean into the love and the joy and the peace that it brings, God, and the patience, self-control, and recognize that when we're outside of that, that we may not get those things. And I do believe this city and this country is a better place when we are choosing those things, and we are choosing you, God. So I just pray that we will choose you as we work for the students of this district and as we work for the teachers and staff and just the people of this city, God. We love you. We thank you for everything that you've given us, and it's in your Son and my Savior Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. Okay, like I said, we don't have anything coming out of executive session, so we'll move right on into my favorite part, most meetings, special recognitions.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Crawford. Tonight, we would like to begin our recognitions by announcing our November District Students of the Month. The Elementary Student of the Month is Ivan Lugo, a fifth grade student at Ramey Elementary School. The Secondary Student of the Month is Austin Aguilar, a seventh grade student at Caldwell Arts Academy. At this time, please join me in watching a brief video about these two outstanding students.
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two district students of the month. These students are selected by the display of their unique outstanding qualities. We believe these qualities lead to successful student outcomes both in and outside of the classroom. First, we would like to recognize Ivan Lugo, a fifth grade student at Ramey Elementary. Ivan is a bright, caring, optimistic leader, and he encourages his peers to have positive attitudes. His bright personality is contagious and radiates throughout the classroom. He's also helpful to other students in class.
We're like taking, we were working on some sheets and I already finished and I turned it in, and my teacher asked me if I could help people, like I would choose who I wanted to help and go on, and I said, yeah, okay, and then I went on and helped my peers.
Ivan is a member of the Ramey Student Council and is working on a plan to provide small water bottles to students who are allergic to milk. He works hard, stays focused, and shows that he's dedicated to living out the principles of the Ramey Way.
You have to keep yourself focused and proactive in like school whenever you're trying your best, and you have to work for the win to be the best you can.
Hey, congratulations. You've been named the district's Elementary Student of the Month, and you've done a great job here at Ramey, and we are certainly very proud of you.
Next, we want to congratulate Austin Aguilar, a seventh grader at Caldwell Arts Academy. Austin is always prepared for class and consistently stays on task. His teachers say he is also talented in both performing and visual arts. He says he enjoys graphic design the most and has even created his own brand.
My logo, it looks like a bouncy ball with, you know, the kind of like a checkmark looking line where it like, like it looks like it jumped and it has little legs. This symbolizes something I used to do when I was little. I called, my parents called it jumping around. I would make noises, you know, run around the house, and I just thought it would be fun to create like a little bouncy ball because they always called it jumping around.
Austin is also active in student council and is a member of the National Junior Honor Society. He says he hopes to one day be a professional graphic designer or an engineer.
I really enjoy graphic design. It's really fun, and I really like science. It's really fun to just see how things work and build things and like building images in graphic design. You just, it's a bunch of shapes on top of shapes on top of shapes. And in art classes, the same deal, you sketch it out and then you, you know, you cover it with layers, and it's really fun.
It's my honor to present our secondary student of the month for the entire school system. Out of 9,000 students, one of your classmates has been named student of the month. Mr. Markle's got a medal to give as well, and this month's student of the month is Austin Aguilar. There you go. That's awesome. She also has this as well.
At Tyler ISD, we are committed to graduating all students with the knowledge, skills, and habits necessary for success in college, careers, and life. Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and character. Well done, students, and keep up the good work.
We also have some photos to go with this one. Tonight, we also celebrate our district teacher of the month, Ginny Mayer-Pinair, a fifth grade math and science teacher at Pete Elementary School. Ms. Pinair is a second-year visiting international teacher who is coming to us from the Philippines. Pete Elementary Principal Cassandra Chapa praises Ms. Pinair's ability to engage students with effective and innovative instruction that is evidenced by the growth in her data, illustrating Pete's campus vision and walking the talk of their Wildcat words. Ms. Pinair has modeled her successful strategies by leading professional development sessions for her fellow teachers. Congratulations, Ms. Pinair. We also would like to graduate, congratulate our Tyler ISD Financial Services Department for receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence and the financial reporting for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the financial year that ended August 31st, 2019. This recognition is awarded from the Government Finance Officers Association and is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. This marks the 17th consecutive year for Tyler ISD to receive this state recognition. Congratulations to our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Tasha Bjork, and her team for this outstanding accomplishment. This concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, congratulations to everybody. Next, we have a public hearing on the 2021, that's an acronym, and all caps there, Fritz, Financial Integrity Rating Systems Report, our district status for 2018 and 2019. So we have a presentation of the report by the staff, and then we'll have an opportunity for public and board comments.
I'll try to go through this pretty fast. It's old data. It's from 2018-19. There are 15 indicators that we are graded on. The first indicator is, was our annual financial report submitted on the deadline? And that was yes. The second one is, was there an unmodified opinion in the annual financial report by the external auditor, meaning no findings or anything like that? And the answer was yes. And also, were there any material weaknesses in internal controls? And they did not find any, so we passed that one. The third indicator is, were we in compliance with payment of all our debt? And was it all on time? Yes. Did we make timely payments to TRS, Texas Workforce Commission, Internal Revenue Service, and other governmental agencies? The answer is yes. Was the total unrestricted net asset balance in the governmental activities greater than zero? And we have good fund balance, so that was yes. Was the, this is one where we got partial credit. We got eight out of 10 points. The number of days of cash on hand and current investments in the general fund for the school district sufficient to cover operating expenditures? And we had 89.996, and you have to be 90. So we got eight points on that. Was the measure of current assets to current liabilities ratio for the school district sufficient to cover short-term debt? The answer is yes. The ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets sufficient to support long-term solvency? And this is eight points. You have to be less than 60%, and it's a sliding scale. So we got eight points on this one out of 10. Did the school district's general fund revenues equal or exceed expenditures? And it did, so we don't have to go through the other part. Was the debt service coverage ratio sufficient to meet the required debt service? Yes, it was one and a half times. This is an important indicator, the administrative cost ratio is less than our threshold for school districts, our size. It's 8.55% for administrative costs, and we were at 6.96%. So we're well under that standard. Did we not have a decline in student to staff ratio over three years of 15%? We only had a .3% decrease in student to staff ratio. When we present our PMS data, they compare it to our annual financial report, and we had no variances. Did the external independent auditor indicate that the annual financial report was free of any instances of material noncompliance for grants, contracts, and laws? And did the school district not receive an adjusted repayment schedule for more than one fiscal year for an overallocation of foundation school programs as a result of financial hardship? And we did not. So for both years, we've met 10 of the 10 indicators with 96 of the points, so it's a superior achievement. Some other requirements that we have to present, the superintendent's contract is available on our website. The next slide, or the board and superintendent reimbursements for the fiscal year ending 8/31/19, we're required to report that. No other compensation for the superintendent for that year, no gifts to board members over $250 for that year nor the superintendent, no business transactions for any of the board members' businesses. And then we're required to report the expenditures of the next fiscal year, three months. Just, I don't know why, but they require us to report it, but it's just in line with what it's always been. And then, do we have any short-term financing? No. Did we have a total general fund balance less than 2% of total expenditures? No. And we've not declared financial exigency. We've had one superintendent the last five years and one business manager the last five years. And that's basically it, unless you have any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. The board, do we have any questions for Ms. Bjork or comments?
Just one comment. When things are going well, sometimes they get overlooked or forgotten, and this is an area of our district that has always gone well. So the fact that we sometimes don't give you the credit you deserve, apologize for that, but this is a, this is consistently a great area of our district, and I feel sorry for whoever breaks the streak, if it ever gets broken after 17, 18, 19 years. It's gonna get up there at some point, but you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I think we also have an opportunity for public comment as well. Does anybody in the public want to comment? Okay. Now we have our actual public participation, and I don't know if we have anybody signed up tonight, so, okay, no public participation. Guess we'll move on to continuous improvements in student outcomes. We have a early literacy update.
Per the board's governance count, gosh, that's close. For the, per the board's governance calendar, tonight, we're providing you an early literacy update. Dr. Kristi Hansen will be coming to the table along with Dr. James Kuratin to go over the recent data from Circle Renaissance Star.
Good evening, Dr. Crawford and board. Thank you for giving us this chance to work through some of our early literacy data that we just collected recently. We're gonna talk about two different types of data tonight. So the first is our CLI Engage data, or Circle. Circle is the assessment tool that we use to assess our pre-K students and our Head Start students three times per year, beginning, middle, and end of the year. Just like we do many of our other assessments, it's a, it's not a computer-based test, per se. The teacher does a lot of one-on-one assessments with the student to gauge where they're at, and then that goes into the, into the program to determine the student's level. I did want to point out, it's not, you'll notice, we don't provide any type of projected star proficiencies with this. Obviously, these kids are young that come to us in pre-K and Head Start, but this is a program, just kind of tells us, are they on track to be where they need to be by kindergarten? To just go through a couple of the areas that students are assessed, you'll see about six of the components on the table, and you'll see how students came to us last year, and then where our students this year are beginning the level that, beginning the year. That number tells you the percent of students that are meeting the benchmark for right now. And so this is a one-year test. We only use this test in pre-K and Head Start one year, so when they go to kindergarten, they take a different test. So we don't have cohort data year to year right now, so this is two different groups of kids. But you can see they're, they're close to being at the same performance level as our students last year when they entered. We did just want to provide you a breakdown of where students come in overall, and then break it down by pre-K and then Head Start as well, so you can kind of see where the differences lie between the two different programs. You can see by ethnicity as well as overall. And then, once we collect this data, middle of the year, we'll have some cohort data for you to look at and see how our students are growing. In prior, prior months, I believe it was last month, we actually presented Star Renaissance data, which was what our K through eighth, kindergarten through eighth grade students take to enter assessment with math and reading. So we, they replaced what we used to use MAP the prior years. We presented that data to you, but we wanted to come back to look at some of that data real quick because we requested from Renaissance a comparison of how we are performing in each grade level in each subject relative to some other similar districts. And so we just wanted to present the results of that study to you all tonight. So there's a lot of information in this table, but I'll tell you what's most relevant is gonna be that second column. So this is gonna be our reading data, early literacy and reading, which is basically the reading test for kindergarten first graders. And you'll see where we ranked in the other districts for which they generated scores. Everything from the column that says Tyler over is just the score. That's a scale score that the program uses. So the higher the score, the higher the performance, lower the score, the lower the performance. And I just put it there so you can see what the numbers were. But you can see overall, we're largely at or above each grouping in reading. So when you take and look at us relative to some other districts, we actually are performing fairly well. If you do the same for math, you can see a similar trend from top to bottom, and you can look at the scores there. There were fewer districts to compare, each one of those D1 through D6 is a different district. There were fewer districts that use this math assessment, so fewer districts to compare, but you can kind of, again, just see how we did, how we did overall. So, and then I'll go ahead and pass this over to Dr. Hansen.
So one of the distinctions I really want to point out is that when we talked to you last week, last month, about the Renaissance data, we were giving you national data. And this month, with the Renaissance data, these districts are Texas districts that have similar demographics as Tyler ISD. So we had specifically requested that data, and Renaissance was able to provide it to us, and it actually came in like three or four days after the board meeting. So we just wanted you to be able to have a look at that because I think the, when you're talking about national data, that's valuable data, but when you're talking about Texas data, you're talking about kids who are taking the same, they have the similar curriculum and the similar expectations from year to year. So we just wanted you to take a look at that. And we obviously noticed that that second grade, seventh of seven, so we, you know, that's very helpful for us. We're able to say, okay, what is it that's happening for us that we really need to look at that first grade curriculum and see where we are and what's happening with, with our kids to get them ready? That end of that first grade year is really, really critical for reading, and we know kind of what happened at the end of these kids' first grade year, but still, that's compared to everybody else, so we have to take a look at that. And then, obviously, our math data as well. So it looks like we've got some work to do there in first grade, getting kids ready for second grade, and that's helpful for us as a, as a curriculum department as well to just make sure that we provide, you know, good curriculum and good materials for our first grade teachers to help kids. Wanted to just give you a little bit of background about the, an update about the Science of Teaching Reading and where we are on all of that. Just because all of the things have happened related to COVID does not mean we have put that on the back burner, so I just wanted to bring it back up to you so you could be really clear where we are. We have 79 people participating in our letters continuing in year two of units five through eight, and those are the topics that they're going through. They just completed their, what we're calling their face-to-face. It's virtual face-to-face after their post-unit five training, so. And then we have about 20, somewhere between 17 and 20 early childhood teachers. Those are pre-K, Head Start teachers that are, every new teacher to pre-K or Head Start is required to go through letters so that they can begin to help students with their pre-reading skills. And largely in pre-K, that's all about oral language, and kids with great oral language skills develop into great readers. So that, that largely is what happens with our pre-K students. Remembering that, reading is a relatively new skill that humans have developed, so we, we really work on those oral language skills because that's what's developmentally appropriate for those, for those three and four-year-olds. And then I just wanted to give you a brief little visual of what the TEA Reading Academy is covering. We have eight campuses that are participating in the TEA Required Reading Academy. That is, those are kindergarten through second grade teachers, and they are also doing the Science of Teaching Reading with an added piece of students with special needs and our English language learners. So I wanted to kind of let you know that we have about 150 teachers that are participating in that, and that is a year-long, very intensive program that they're doing. So we have eight campuses doing that this year, and we will have eight more that do it next year. Or we have, we have a couple of years to finish that out, so we'll see, but we'll, we'll get everybody in before, before the deadline. And so that, we have three cohort leaders in-house that are doing that, and last week was our first face-to-face with them as well. So we're still moving along with the Science of Teaching Reading that has not taken a back burner. And just, that's actually a text version of kind of what you saw earlier, a more in-depth version of the kinds of things that they're going through this year, and they will all be finished by mid-June. It's a very intense program. So that is early literacy in Tyler ISD. What questions can I answer for you?
Thank you, board. Y'all have any questions?
I just have a comment. My daughter, who teaches in another district, first grade, she is in the midst of the Reading Academy, and it is intense, but it, it goes into depth and practice on how to teach reading. And, and she says herself that it's, has helped her already, so I can see that this is gonna make a big impact in our district.
It's interesting how we got away from this. We've talked about that here at the DIAS before, about how we all learned how to read. And we sure would love for our higher ed partners to take hold of this as well so that we don't have to do the catching up when they actually start teaching. And we've been communicating that. I don't know if it's working or not, but Commissioner Marath is certainly one that's a, has mentioned that as well. But I will say that as far as things like TEI, things that were the Reading Academy, things that were in House Bill 3, as we get into the next legislative session, from what I'm hearing, these are the types of things that are going to be protected as far as funding goes. So it's not like we're going through this, going through the motions, and that this won't be around in two or four years, depending upon how the economy affects the way we're funded. These things are going to stay in place. So it's gonna be interesting to see what the 87th legislature does with the rest of House Bill 3, if these are the, kind of the sacred, sacred things to keep. They are the cheaper things to keep in House Bill 3, no doubt about that, TEI and this one. So, but I do think this will have some long-term impact, and I'm glad that we kind of got a little head of the game for one year at least, and we can also have some knowledge going into this as well.
Okay, anybody else?
I do have, I have just a question on, you know, it seems like from the, I guess, peer data that we saw after third grade, it seems like we were top two, you know, in both of those, and I was wondering if they give you the names of those other districts, and was one other district the top across the board? And just out of curiosity, you know, what are they doing?
They do not give us the name. And the, right, so the, the districts, I mean, I'll have to have James kind of look at that data more while I'm talking, but we really were trying to figure out where we were. If we, you know, if we knew specifically the name of the district, obviously, we could call and say, what are you guys doing? And I do think that we, we began already to look at our second grade and kind of, so that's where our focus has been, you know, what do we need to be looking at? Really, it's not second grade, we really do need to be looking at first grade. So looking at that first grade curriculum for us, we didn't really focus on as much, you know? That's where my emphasis was, but I don't know if you noticed a specific district.
Just looking at the reading data, it looks like District 5 is the, the district that's the first on grades, second through fifth. District 5, yeah, they don't give us the names, so just to keep it confidential, but they, but it looks like District 5 is the one that was consistently ahead of us in fifth grade and fourth grade, although second through fifth grade would be the one.
Well, it is good, good to know that, you know, as they go through our system, that it seems like they're improving, and that's always good to see, you know, growth is good. So, okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Okay, that was early literacy update. Now we're moving on to the approval of minutes. We have approval of minutes of the workshop from October 8th and then October 19th regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it, and the motion carries for both items A and B. Okay, now we're moving on to our business legal. Okay, now we're moving on to our business legal finance consent agenda. And I do not believe anybody had anything specifically they wanted to pull. So if that still stands, then I'll go ahead and take a motion to approve items A through K.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries, seven oh. We are moving on to our curriculum instruction consent agenda. There is one item we'll make kind of a special motion for, which will be item D. But other than that, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve items A, B, C, and E.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the eyes have it, motion carries. And I will now go ahead and entertain a motion on item D, which is to consider approval of the memorandum of understanding with the University of Texas Health Science Center at Tyler for mental health care services.
President Wash, when I move, we approve the administration's recommendation, pending final review and edits between our legal counsel and superintendent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bergfeld. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. Okay, now we're moving on to superintendent's staff reports. We have our district of innovation teacher certifications that are granted.
Yes, sir. Because we are fortunate to be a district of innovation, this sure did help us plug a gap. As y'all know, each and every year, the state of Texas is having a difficulty producing certified teachers. And then we also are at the point to where we have a lot of baby boomers and post-baby boomers that are retirement eligible. Per our district of innovation plan, we are allowed to actually employ individuals that have a four-year degree that could potentially plug in into our teaching vacancies. Remember, these individuals that are on a district of innovation plan only are provided a probationary contract of one year. They do not get tenure. They do not get on a term contract ever. However, we do have quite a few, I believe thirty-four to thirty-five of these individuals that are on here that are actually in a certification program. We're actually waiting for certification from out of state, or they're actually waiting for certifications to come from the state as well. So we are very pleased to present tonight the roster of the district of innovation teacher certifications that are granted. Again, thank you for allowing us to do this. We appreciate our district of innovation committee allowing us to do this as well because there are some very difficult teaching fields that are on that list that are sometimes hard to find anyone that has a single certification. Think of these folks that might have went to a four-year school and got English degrees without teaching certification. It's an easy fit for us to put into an English class, provide them a lot of intense professional development support, along with mentoring as well. And we've actually found some really good teachers that didn't go through normal teacher prep programs.
Are these teachers that are currently employed? Or are these for upcoming positions?
No, these are currently employed positions.
Okay.
And the certificate we grant is only good in Tyler ISD? Only good in Tyler ISD, and it's only a one-year certificate, probationary.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for Dr. Crawford?
Nothing related directly to this. It's just that, being new to the board, I guess I'm gonna need an update on district of innovation and details associated with that and what it allows the district to do. I assume it's something separate and apart from state T E A regulations that they allow certain districts to do based on academic achievement or something from that perspective?
Yes, really. It relieves the district of certain waivers or certain restrictions for statutes, statutory requirements, one being the start date for the school year. The statute says that you can start no later than the fourth Monday of August. Our district of innovation has allowed us to actually start earlier than the first Monday of August. We appreciate the board allowing us to do that. And there are some that don't want us to start that early. However, that's one thing. Another thing could be district certifications as well. I don't know why everybody looks at Andy or Mr. Bergfeld. So there's another thing as well, is certifications is another one as well. Again, we designed this in the fact that if you're struggling to find teachers, there's only an available pool out there. And certainly being able to hire someone, maybe an engineer who's looking for a second career, or maybe whoever he works for lays him off. Well, that'd be a great math candidate for us if we can't find a math, certified math teacher. I've had this conversation with UT Tyler. A few years ago, they produced one math-certified secondary teacher for high school. This is the way for us to grab someone who has a mathematics background and again, provide those supports, allow us to do that. Dr. Hanson, some other, those are the two big rocks in regard to the district of innovation. What are a couple of other ones we had?
Twenty-two to one. There's one where we still do that, but it allowed us to just come to you twice a year and tell you kinda where we are instead of having to.
It's a local decision as opposed to a commissioner of education decision.
And this was, this came out of, was it four years ago?
Two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand, House Bill Five. And Mr. Newsom, the state recognized that there was some, there's some red tape that was rather cumbersome for a lot of districts. So they gave you the opportunity as districts to apply to be a district of innovation. And then you could list, they had kind of a menu of things that you could choose. Was it seven or five? But you were limited to what you could choose. I remember that because we whittled it down to however many. And this was one of them, especially when like the Career and Technology Center was really coming on, and you might not have an auto mechanic that's certified by the, you know, state. So, you know, there's some places you can plug these in, and it helps you as a district, so.
So did I understand that we, the district, certify those individuals for a year? Or what do we do? I know we employ them, I guess, on a year contract, but we don't certify them in any regards, do we?
It's a district of innovation, it's a local certification. As approved through the district of innovation, the House Bill Five statute, you can provide that here locally. And you've gotta have certain supports built in, which I've listed some of those in regard to what we provide those teachers.
And one of the things that we did too as well was, we talked about these being on probationary contracts, but we also extended, as Dr. Crawford calls it, how long we could be engaged with some of these teachers before we were actually married to them.
Right.
Because that was something, once you got in the system and you were a teacher, it was very, very difficult, if you weren't performing, to get out of that.
So state law says if you've worked five out of eight years, five out of eight, yes, five out of eight years, you're eligible for a term contract, a tenured contract, for lack of a better term, after your first year, unless you're a district of, if you were coming from somewhere else. So like I say, you were coming from Brownsburg to come work here. So we asked the district of innovation for a three-year engagement or dating process as opposed to a one-year, and they compromised with us for a two-year. So it takes you two years to get on a term contract in Tyler ISD. And a lot of districts are moving to that direction because that statute there is just one of the things in chapter twenty-one of the education code that we say we're not a unionized state, or you can't get tenure, but it's in chapter twenty-one. And we wanna do what's right for our kids and not get married to someone so quickly because by the time we bring teacher renewals to the table, it's about March or April. So it's not even a full year of inspection of a teacher that comes here. So we at least get a good, I don't know, twenty months before we actually wanna commit to someone full-time. So that's what the district of innovation is all about. We can get you some more information on that.
Okay.
All right.
But I personally, with all the red tape that comes along with public ed, that was something to me that seemed, you know, like, hey, let's do something sensible and let districts, you know, kinda wiggle out of some of this. So I do appreciate the district of innovation. Okay, moving on to future business, we have Team of Eight training. Looking forward to that and spending time with all of y'all. And then that's December first and December fourteenth, we have a regular meeting. And I don't believe we have a workshop in December.
We actually had one presentation on there. That was the Agent Millsleygoe Safety and Security Update. So we asked that we not bring y'all back just for that one item. We will actually push that to the, are you doing that, the December regular meeting? January workshop? January workshop.
That'll work. Okay, well, good work tonight. I think that's it, so I will now entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned.